Should you guys want to find that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have action on the agenda, and typically I would ask our superintendent if there are any changes to the agenda. And by way of introduction, as is in this first meeting, I would like everyone to meet and welcome Mr. Richard Don. Rich just started with us a little over a week ago in the interim superintendent capacity, and we are thrilled to have his guidance and input. Mr. Don, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as you see it.
Sub move.
Motion from Karen Second from Mike to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The agenda is approved. Action on the minutes. That were attached for all of you.
I make a motion to accept the minutes Monday 24th.
Thank you. Motion from Tom Second from Mike to accept the minutes as presented, or in your packets, I should say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. That motion clearly passes also. Bear with me, my electronic device is not as fast as my paper is. We will move up. The vouchers are next. That list is attached.
I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $1,310,238 and 27 cents as presented.
Second.
Motion from Mike, second from Karen. Anyone have a question?
I just have questions, Rick.
Listen, we can get the answer.
I just have questions, just more if you're asking anything, but on page five, there's a $13,000 expenditure on, it's like agile sports tech. It looks like some sort of software. Do we have a description of that type of software by any chance?
We may need to check on that nearby too.
Okay, cool. And then I also noticed that we purchased the Forecast Five, which I was able to actually see that in action back in January at the WOSB convention. I thought at one time we were using a different software, but it appears that we're going to use Forecast Five now. Correct?
Yes, yep.
Alright. I'm putting you on the spot here.
Excellent, yep. They did have that discussion today, so yeah, we will be using Forecast Five.
Excellent. I think that's all I have. No questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor to approve the vouchers in the amount listed in Mike's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion clearly passes. Vouchers are approved. Public participation. I did not pick up the sheet. I know Mr. Price is going to speak to us. Has anyone else signed up? Show me your hand if you do. If not, we're going to invite Mr. Price to the podium and...
Good evening. My name is Mike Price. I'm the president of the Milton Pool Fundraising Committee. Here to speak on the jet item number two, I believe, on a referential update. On June 17, a cloud group consisting of myself, Jenny Quaude, Mike Price, Stephen Schatz, Zach Johnson, Brian Hamel, S. Newton, Mike Huffman, who's our owners rep, Jeff Knight, Knight Consulting, who works on USA Swimming and Scott's Swimming and Pool Construction, and John from Ring Maker, all visited three schools to get some insight on what we can do to make Milton Pool more community-friendly and build the best pool possible for this community. So we want to make sure that we meet the best needs of our school academic athletic programs, EMREC, middle marlin swim teams, and for the residents of Milton. In discussions prior to these visits, we decided that a facility that provided 10 lanes was the best way to achieve that. Schools that we visited were St. Augustine Prep and Milwaukee. They have a 10-lane pool, but they have a four-lane warm water pool, and their seating capacity is over 800. The purpose of that was to look at what a second pool vessel would look like in addition to the eight-lane pool that was proposed or projected for the referendum to pass. What that would look like structurally and mechanically. Next we visited Rockshow itself. They have a 10-lane configuration that includes a movable bulkhead. So they have eight lanes that go both directions to the pool itself. It's built, and then the bulkhead removes and allows for two lanes for long cooldown or in competition, or additional lanes for swim lessons or swim practices. They have two level groups. They're able to separate them out. Their configuration has capacity for 2,000 people, and they host very large meets at state level for USA Swimming. Next one we visited nearby was the Memorial. It features a very small eight-lane pool vessel that's been proposed in our current design, the walking ramp. Their seating configuration allows a capacity of 870 people. From those visits, we decided that to create a hybrid of the Lloyd Pool, which is eight lanes, and they added a two-lane warm water pool, utilizing that design from St. Augustine Prep, from four lanes down to two lanes. And looking at the proposed plans that were approved and voted on by the public, the pool committee felt that the design fell short in few areas that were important to members of this five-foot group. The model that we've all seen has been based on a stone high school pool. Although it's a nice facility, it has notable, notable locations available space. The current pool's design is highly recommended minimums. Receiving that space is now fine by USA Swimming that would allow for hosting large meets such as regional or a marlin swim and receptional for our high school pools. The following areas are the enhancements to the current design. Now I'll stress this, that will be fundraised, will not be burdened by the tax rates to profit from these additional enhancements. We can raise funds and have these team as varieties for this five-foot group. Increased deck space, popular for our coaches and is recommendation from the directors and coaches of the facilities that we visited. The proposed design calls for 12 feet of deck space all around the perimeter of the pool, although it's far greater than we have now. It is smaller than the pools we visited, does not meet the recommendations as online USA Swimming. At the minimum, USA Swimming recommends 18 feet of space on most of the pool and 24 feet on one side to allow for athletes seating on deck. The new running, Stephen will explain later, will incorporate 18 feet of space behind the starting blocks and maybe on the other side, and 12 feet on the two remaining sides. Decreased seating at 550, up from the 450 that was proposed in the design with the locker was potentially underneath. That's seating space off the deck. You want to keep the spectators off the deck, you're not trying to act like a maritime mud and salt and snow and all that stuff. It's just easier for the, you can tile, life lasts for a lot of lifetime, and the seats will end all later, but... Store nine has 450, and in most meets we go to, they host large meets or conferences, there's still limited seating space. Parents ought to sit on the hallway and watch from the deck overlooking the pool. There are kids who come in and they're paying. You can, we have limited deck space, and you don't charge them, pose that, and it's like, hey, you can't stand outside. Middleton is another facility. They host receptionals with a capacity of 400. They have a limited space, and online ticketing person program is utilized. The tenants purchase a two-ticket backseat, and the system is flawed. The tickets are sold out in five minutes or less. It's not allowed to purchase or, or we're not allowed to purchase, opportunity to give the system. These parents or grandparents having to sit in an auxiliary gym to not attend one of the biggest meets of the season for their child. A lot of times, utilizing Milton's online ticket system, you're waiting on five or six, and six or one already is a lot. We do not want that to have every, adding 100 seats will alleviate that problem. It's also USA Swimming recommendation to have at least 500 people for a sectional or regional type of meet. Increase storage space. Our design calls for 500 square feet of current pool and 740. We're looking at doubling at 1,150. And then the two-lane warm water pool creates dedicated warm cooldown space for competition, creates program for swim lessons and swim practices. Having that will bring in additional revenue for meets where we rent those other teams and area to host the meets in our facility.
Can you wrap it up, Mike, for that?
Having a warm water pool creates program for members of our community. Tom complains that people do not want to come to the pool because it's too cold, over the young old. It's impossible to adjust the temperatures in one pool facility, and it's dangerous to have warm waters for athletes to practice in, be hydrated, something like that. So those are some of the highlights that we want to make sure that we're going to build the best pool facility for the community of Milton. Meet all districts, needs, program, and athletics, and the community, and hopefully last, community, and our contribution on that every time. Again, I'll stress, this will not be additional cost to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and then as a nice segue, I guess, referential update is next on our agenda, and I don't know who's going first. Mr. Clayman, are you going to go first? Steve Clayman from Huffman Contracting is going to give us a little bit of an update.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steve Clayman. I'm the owner representative for the school district. We're Justin Mike Huffman, Department of Facility Development. For these packets, we included Huffman Facility Development, included...
Thank you. This is awesome.
Can you hear me? Okay. In your package, we included a status report. We'll include that each time we meet, which covers ongoing design progress, our construction schedule, key days, and upcoming activities. And I'm going to cover just a few highlights from that before this in your packet. Design meetings, those are really the core essence of what we're doing right now. We continue to meet with the architect on a bi-weekly basis and with different user groups, including principals, teachers, and staff, as we work through the design of each building. Last Thursday, Matt brought in several science teachers and the music teacher from the middle school to review the ongoing design and provide feedback. PRA had produced a very nice 3D digital model that you could literally turn any which way and walk through the buildings and the classrooms. So it's a very useful tool for the teachers to see at that point, and I think they will continue to develop those 3D models. I'd like to ask them to bring that, a sample of those models here to one of the meetings, so you can see the level of detail that's there. So these models are very helpful to visualize how actual rooms will look. It's just not a flat object on paper. It's a 3D model that you can literally fly through. The model allows teachers to tell us what they know, works in the classroom, and the feedback leads to a more refined design. Jeremy brought in members of the tech ed department from the high school to discuss things, layout and equipment requirements as well. PRA left with good information, both from the middle school and the high school, to continue to work on their design. This kind of feedback process with various user groups will continue as drawings evolve, so that we can end up with designs that meet the needs of the teachers and students. Each Tuesday now, I'm meeting with Steve Schatz to review ongoing activities and lay out action plans for the coming week. Some of the things that we are tracking together are the land swap discussions with the city, the capital maintenance plan, our consultants through the architect, mechanical, electrical, plumbing consultants, civil consultant, food service, and environmental. We're in touch with them on a weekly basis. And we are working with environmental land management consulting, EMC, who schedule testing and remediation of the schools ahead of construction. We also review invoices for approval and processing. This weekly meeting is very productive, and it sets the stage for what we hope to achieve for the coming week. And to follow on Mike's comments, several weeks ago, I heard from the high school design team, friends of the Milton Pool Committee, did a field trip, visited those three pools, St. Augustine Prep, Rockshow South, and Lloyd Memorial. And as a result of this field trip, several enhancements to the new pool design have been proposed. They are outlined in the letter that Steve had submitted to you, and they're in your packet. If you don't have any questions on the process that I've just outlined, and activities that have been taken up so far, I'll turn this over to Steve to show you some of the, so show you some of the design elements that Mike had discussed.
Alright, thank you very much, and thanks to Mike Price for leading into this discussion. So the rendering that I'll walk through right now is what was put forward when the referendum was out. And this is the rendering of the pool that I'll refer to when I'm talking tonight as the base pool. The base pool is an eight-lane pool with a zero depth entry ramp. So it adds the deck space around seating for 450, exactly like it was proposed. And then we went through and we visited three different pools, like Mike said, you know, to look at different design elements that would always work for the school district's program, as well as what the priorities were going to be for Friends of Milton Pool Group to fundraise for. You know, Mike talked about the warm-up pool, and this, these two renderings here kind of give you an idea of if those funds can be raised, what pool space could be in comparison to what I was referred to as base pool. So this shows the warm-water therapy pool on the other side, and that's just a view on the opposite side there too. And this last item here is the list that we came up with as far as, oh, that one's quite outdated, but the deck space is 12 feet of deck space all the way around the pool. So that's a no-cost addition. Bleacher capacity, that'd be adding 100 seats to what was proposed to get the seating count up to 550. They've taken item, item C is the lab pool. That would be a 58 by 75 two-lane pool with a zero-depth entry ramp. And that would be an addition of 4,200 square feet to what the pool area itself would be. The next two items were crossed off and were factored in, and then an addition to the storage space, like Mike said, we're actually going to have a little bit less storage space the way it's being drawn up right now. Friends of Milton Pool would like to try to fundraise to accommodate for some additional storage space. One of the items that we noticed on our tours is that in all the pools that we went to, stuff was still a lot of debt because the storage space was shortened through that design process. So the idea is to keep that deck space and keep stuff in storage. So again, that's what it could be through fundraising efforts of the Friends of Milton Pool. And these items are only going to be in addition to no extra dollars to the debt payers. 599 still supports this rendering here, which is the base pool.
Any questions? I have a question for you, and this is probably for Mike too, and the Friends of Milton Pool. So by the way, I have a lot of gratitude for Friends of Milton Pool for spending up and potentially financing the added features. One question I would have though is, obviously with these added features, you get, you know, it's more pool area, more tubular foot, if you will. Is there a plan to possibly, I guess, with that extra consumables and maintenance of that extra area, is there like a plan on how we can sustain that or, you know, maintain that bigger size, so frankly?
As far as accounting for the additional operating costs?
Yeah.
We haven't had those discussions as yet. That would be a discussion that we would definitely have if the funds are able to be met as to what one ongoing commitment could be. There's a funding deadline for, you know, when we would need the commitment of those funds to be able to keep the design process on track is July 31st. So that would definitely be a conversation we would have if those funds were able to be met at this time.
Thanks, Stephen. Yeah, I know a year ago, Mike had a discussion, and that was actually one of the things we were hoping to do is to get a good pool program together that maybe be self-sustaining, so hopefully those discussions can continue. I appreciate this.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Stephen. Moving on to reports, WOSB had a symposium and summer leadership institute that Karen was able to attend, and we're going to invite her to share her thoughts.
I was very fortunate to be able to attend the summer symposium, the leadership institute in Appleton this past weekend. Probably the biggest focus on both programs was equity and how our districts look at equity when it comes to programming, and not just educational programming, but sports and other extracurriculars. And one of the things, and I apologize for having to repeat this because I would never be able to remember this. One of the things that they talked about, there is a big difference between equality and equity. And equality is defined as each person receiving the same amount. And equity means that each person receives the amount they need in the way of resources, attention, and supports. So basically, what our students of color need, they should be receiving. What our students with physical or cognitive disabilities need, they should be receiving. And so part of the reason why I wanted to go is I know one of the things that Ryan Ruggles is wanting to do this year, and probably with the help of Susan Post, is take a look at our curriculum and kind of take a look at that and see if that is exactly what the needs of our students at Milton is at. And as being chair of the curriculum committee, I thought, oh, I could go to this and see what I can find. And I've already mentioned to Susan I'm going to be challenging her with a lot of this and asking how we looked at this programming through an equity lens. And then they worked that even more into educational equity. And excellence means that each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of their race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. And a lot of the presenters, Verona area's school was one of the presenters there, and I know they took a look at students of color and their low-income students, and they defined low-income as percentage of students that were receiving free and reduced lunch. Another one of the seminars I went to was very surprising to find out that, I believe I'm, I don't think I had here. I think it was 39% of all Wisconsin students are receiving free and reduced lunch. That's statewide. That's whether you're, you know, from Beloit to Ashland, which I found kind of shocking. So a lot of Friday was focused on equity and the schools, and how is the school board, it is our duty to make sure that things are done equitably, as far as programming goes, and in our policies. And what I handed out, and some of the members may be looking at, is some information I brought back. Well, it was put out by DPI, and it's decision, it's equity decision and policy tool. And what DPI has now adopted is everything that they're looking at. They have four tools that they take a look at to see if their program fits that. And then Verona School District also came up with their resource management and decision-making rubric. And whether it exacerbated the disparities, perpetuated the disparities, migrated the disparities, excuse me, mitigated the disparities, or eliminated the disparities, both of which I think were really good tools, and certainly ones that I'm going to be looking at when we take a look at our curriculum and policies and things of that moving forward. And one of the things they really came to challenge us with is looking at intentional and unintentional consequences. And defining consequences is not necessarily something negative. And one of the broad things we took a look at was maybe changing like a ninth-grade English program. And if we change that, because right now, most of English programs in high schools, authors are white males. I know there's not a whole lot of programs in high schools where authors are authors of color or lower socioeconomic status, LGBTQ, things of that nature. And if you do that, if you change your curriculum to focus more on those types of authors, what unintentional consequences are there and what's, you know, intentional? Well, obviously, it becomes more inclusive to students that fit those populations. But then the unintentional consequences is do we have staff that are able to speak to those books and teach to those books? And if not, what does that mean? Does that mean we need more staff? Do we need staff training? And that, of course, equates to dollars. And then looking at just different schools, because this school may have a higher population, a particular child in need. Your school may get more resources than the school over here. So then it's, the challenge becomes having to talk to the administrators of the buildings and say, yep, I understand that you need this, but unfortunately, they over here, you need this more, and we'll see what we can do. So that was very interesting. And then the leadership portion of it was just, and this was all geared towards the school board members, just kind of how, and I hate to say how to be a better board member, but it was kind of how to be a better board member. We talked about some of the seminars that I went to were like a superintendent devaluation and doing a board evaluation, and how do you resolve conflicts on your board, and things of those natures. So it was very much board-focused. And again, a lot of good information that I certainly am going to be sharing out with Rich in the days to come, as well as hopefully with our fellow board members, and hopefully we can make some of those changes and again, bring those changes to you guys through our behavior, because this is for the kids. And was so frequently told to us that our behavior on the board, good or bad, not only reflects upon our board, but it also impacts our students and teachers. And I know that through our trials and tribulations the last several months, that's something that this board needs to work on. So hopefully, we can kind of get it together and forward. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Also in the report world, 2018-19 seclusion restraint report, Director of Student Services, Susan Post.
Each year I have the opportunity to update the Board of Education on how we use seclusion and restraint in previous year. Staff members who are involved in seclusion and restraint go through training. Each year, those who have been trained in the past go through a half-day training in August. Those that are new to the district, are new to seclusion and restraint, go through a full year, or excuse me, a full day of training. Although we monitor them throughout the year. Each time seclusion restraint is used, a report is written, and that report is reviewed by building principal as well as the team, looking for patterns of behavior and trying to generate some strategies so that we can help students so that they don't lose control. There are nine sites in the district, including 4K and Meccas, and the chart that you have there has each of those listed over on the left-hand side, the number of students that seclusion and restraint was used. E E N stands for educational exceptional need. Then you have the number of seclusions, the number of restraints, and then the number of both seclusion and restraint. Because some instances, you will need seclusion and restraint, and in that final column, you have the total number in each building. There's some underlying beliefs when we do our training, and one is that any time we use seclusion and restraint, it takes a negative toll on all involved. The staff are impacted in a negative way as well as the students. So when a student is at his or her worst, we want to be at our very best. We believe that building administration and student services should be involved in the seclusion and restraint and the training. It's not just about special education. It's about students who have exceptional needs. We believe that it's important to be proactive with working with these students. If we can find a way to have our environment be less challenging so that they can be more productive, we want to be able to do that. And then we also think it's super important to be monitoring what's being reported. Are we under-recording? Are we over-recording? We want to make sure that we're recording as accurately as we possibly can. We have two trainers in the district, and I think Matt has been doing this for three years. I said longer than Matt. Three?
Yep.
So we have two administrators that do the training for this, and that is super helpful because they have an impact on their building, but they also have the opportunity to train the entire the entire staff. And so in August, the last two years, we've had them train everybody on de-escalation. So how do you notice that a student is starting to escalate? What are the strategies that you can use so that you don't poke at them and make things worse? And Julie Musgrove was the other trainer with Matt. There's been a real push to read Ross at school. If you're looking for a good book to read, it's written by Ross Green. Ross Green has taken the research on behavior in the last forty years. He has done some additional research, and what he is showing is that there's other alternatives to talking to children, and he calls it Plan B, and that's having kids involved in the programming, as well as looking for what skill does the child have versus how do you compensate them. We've had a real target focus on the social and emotional competencies that I've been talking about numerous times before. We need, they start at 4K, they go all the way to adult. This is teaching kids how to understand their strengths and understand that everybody's going to have a problem, and so they can embrace those challenges. And then lastly, as far as additional efforts for all, we are having facilitated conversations every time seclusion and restraint is used. It's an opportunity for people to sit down and talk and give their perspectives on what is happening. Now, if you look at those numbers on that chart, we have had a rather significant decline in the use of seclusion and restraint. Two years ago, this report had a hundred and ninety-four. Last year was only eighty-five, and this year is only forty-two. That's a pretty significant decline. Now, there are some factors. Students move in, students move out, students move into one building, and they have a higher number of seclusion and restraints, but they get used to that building. So the second year is a lot less, and the third year is a lot less. However, we also track specific students. So I'd like the top twelve students of the district over the last forty years, and there's a real decrease in every single one of their numbers of seclusion and restraint. So sharing that with you so that you understand, we're looking at it from multiple perspectives. We don't want to use seclusion and restraint if you don't have to. We want to give kids options and teach them how to use the skills that they have so that they can contribute to a school like Milton about education. Any questions I can answer about that report for you?
This is a nice one. It's a really good question. And I can only speak to West because I know West has what they refer to as the rainforest room. So if a child like West goes into the rainforest room, is that considered seclusion?
No.
Okay. So how is that defined though?
Yeah, so we also have a room, we don't call it the rainforest room, but we have a room at East that we created. And it was, it was an amazing idea, which I give credit for. So you have a student who's losing control, and he says, can I please go to a quiet place? And I just need to be alone for a while. The door is open, he's being observed the entire time, but he is not being asked to go there, nor is he being forced to go there. It's much like if I'm in a mid-meeting and someone takes me off, and I get to go to the bathroom for a little while to calm down, and then I come back when I'm ready to... And if we could teach kids to do that when they're little, so that they don't lose their temper and fight back, we want to be able to do that. So the rainforest room is the same thing, is students having an option to step away from the situation that's making them uncomfortable. A lot of times, they're taught breathing strategies, they're taught visualization strategies, they might have different widgets that they can play with and kind of get rid of their energy. Some of them walk around a little bit, they might have a stuffed animal that they hug. But it's an option for them. Whereas if we use seclusion, we are putting a child in a room, and we are making sure that he stays there until we feel that he is safe to come out. And the rainforest room can walk in and can walk out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. If you want to be trained in those self-regulation strategies, look. Matt will do that. Anybody else? Should be very proud of these numbers. I'm very proud of that because it's pretty impressive.
Says a lot for a staff.
Yes, it does. And our trainers.
Thank you, Susan. Okay. Matt, we're launching up to the Stephen and family handbooks. And Sarah Stephen will first be six.
I will keep in your packet, you received a memo that just outlined the most changes for our handbook for this year, and then a copy of the handbook. Most of the changes are just the typical annual changes about dates, the names of staff members and board members. We did do some changing pre-K-12, looking at our district attendance, looking at the state law and board policy, and really trying to communicate that very clearly and consistently across all of our school handbooks. And so we worked on that as a full admin, and that language has been updated in the handbook to reflect those changes. Added some new links to the current board policies. Some of those policies have been updated through Neoblog in the last year, and so we needed to make sure that they, the families who are accessing the current policies. And then Mike contributed some changes with our nutrition team, with the food pricing, as well as deciding to add the language in about policies and procedures related to unpaid meals, and what guidelines his team uses to service families when they're unpaid meals. So that language is very clearly added, and that's good. Any questions about the case six? All right. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Peter Wolf, middle school.
Are we on now? I'm going to Alga. Are we on? Oh, we're on. Middle school, very similar to case six. We had some minor language changes in terms of updating staff, updating dates, updating some languages to tenants' policy, which Mrs. Stuckey highlighted, with some changes in board policy. We did update the bullying and harassment policy, as well as the food service language changes that Mrs. Stuckey noted as well. So really no wholesale policy change at the middle school, everything status quo, other than those minor language changes. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Thanks, Matt.
You coined me the educational ladder, high school. I don't know about that, but yes. She evolved. But the same thing in the high school, had just some very minimal changes, clarification on sort of wording for our rebate policy for some of the assessments, other than adding the same tenants' policy wording that's existed in K-12 and stuff from Mr. Gosdak and other regular updates. Very, very minimal, this year.
Any questions for anybody?
Jeremy, just as an information to the board, central registration is the thing. So just a very...
Yes, oh, so for the...
I'm reading, tell them.
Oh, yeah, central registration, and you're cooking on the spot. It's the Tuesday and the Wednesday, our August six and seven. Yes, will be taking place in the high school from twelve until seven o'clock. Information, online registration starts next week, and postcards have gone out, and it's almost exactly like we've done the last few years. Should be all set to go. Talking about that mid-July, though, seems kind of wrong.
Yeah, so we are not doing building and department announcements tonight, so that's why we're queuing you up on that, but thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any other questions about central registration and the process for events?
So, do we need a motion to approve these seventy-one dollars?
No, we think you have, they don't need to...
All right. New business. We are up to Ms. Fritthorne, and I will invite her to the podium for our action, discussion and possible action on lease agreements with Dell Financial Services and Acer Financial.
Good evening, and we'll come up to a couple more members, so I haven't had a chance to meet yet. Nice to see you. So filling you in on how it's got here, Ed had an opportunity to meet with Christina and Neil and Maggie and I, and talk about the direction technology that's been rolling over the past six months to a year as we plan for these leases. And so if you have your packet, our two copies of these, one with the Dell lease, which would be for laptops for project reboarding and other applications through the district, and then the Acer lease, which is for pro books. So the details of those lease agreements are in your board packet. If you have any questions about that, we can hear those. And then Christina and Neil are here. They really did all those like work agreements to get the bits sent out, make sure we get responses, get the lease agreements in our hands. And with Kim's help, we will also get all that in the board packet for you tonight. So I appreciate you making that a lot easier for the business office to bring it before you today. Did you have questions about the details of the lease, or the allowance, or purpose, instructional use?
I have some questions.
Okay.
So it looks like about forty leases, forty units, is that right?
Yeah.
Between the different types of pro books and whatnot. And then it looks like for, for the Dell equipment, boy, it looks like we've got to get about a hundred, hundred and six, about a hundred and eight laptops or Dell computers? Is that right?
Yes, there are sixty desktops with respect for Project Lead the Way to provide for Mr. Gilmore's new curriculum this fall. That's going to be two PC labs. And then the laptops are for district office secretaries, you know, people like Ms. Krause over here, and all the secretaries in the district that use Windows throughout the district. We're kind of trying to refresh them all at once. So the new laptops, and then all the Chrome devices, most of those work with Mr. Gosdak to make sure that they work for the student service application.
And then for the desktops, that's for the engineering program that we talked about?
That is correct. It's actually, it's going to be for the Project Lead the Way lab, that's the new course we approved in December. And it's also been the business lab, too. And putting those together have also the same site.
So one question I have is that, you know, the district is primarily an Apple district, if you will, and I know there's some org that goes, that can be supported with an Apple operating system. Is Project Lead the Way, do they prefer PC format?
It's required.
It's required. Actually, I'm more a PC guy than an Apple side. Okay, yeah, that was just one question I was, wanted to ask, because I know, I didn't want to mention it for the Yule for last, and whatnot.
You know, Brian, too, we have, well, we got the specs, and those were shared in December. We also had staff that are going through the training at MSOE this summer. They have reiterated the fact that there's not the workarounds with the Max, so.
Okay. That's all I'm sharing. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, this is an action item for us, an entertaining motion. Someone is so inclined.
I think motion approved the lease agreements with Dell Financial Services and Acer Financial Services. As presented.
Oh, second.
Motion Tom seconded by Mike. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion as it stated, which is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion clearly passed. Thank you, Ms. Fritthorne. Discussion and possible action on a letter of intent to exchange real property between the City of Milton and the school district of Milton. Stephen, give us the whys and the wherefores on that process.
You guys can tell I'm a very visual person. I always come loaded with some pictures to show everybody. So, last board meeting, the board approved the schematic designs for the elementary schools, and upon the completion of the schematic designs and the survey work that was completed, it actually came to light, and we knew for a long time, we had a boundary issue, we never added on to East, but the proposed addition would actually fall on the city property. It's outlined in this visual here, the black line, the black line right here shows where the boundary is currently. And when you scroll down, you see the proposed addition is right, right over that. And to accommodate for the proposed addition, plus the lost proposed playground area, we are asked to adjust that boundary by a hundred and twenty-five feet into Goodrich Park, which is owned by the City of Milton. And in working with Al from the city, Al and Howie, Al's over there, if you guys have any city-specific questions, we tried to figure out a way to make this mutually beneficial to both the school district and the city. So we proposed a land slot. We would be receiving the 1.4 acres from the city, and in return for that, we would be giving up, this one over here. At the high school, we'd be giving up some areas that are already, you know, city functions. So we look at the 0.91 acres, that's currently owned by us, and that is a stormwater basin that the city has already constructed and the city maintains, but, you know, for some rival reason, we have a whole piece of land. We look over here, that area in red, we'd be giving the city is actually part of the municipal driveway. And the city would be giving us that small triangle piece of land that for some reason the city owns that's right in the middle of our driveway to municipal drive. So that would be the transaction at the high school. And then here at district office, we would be giving up that strip of red there, which is kind of odd, too. We own a, you know, four parking stalls in the library parking lot recently. And the city owns our retaining wall and the parking lot. Also, a benefit for the city is the green space in between the parking lots there would make, would make way for the library's future storybook garden addition that they're fundraising for right now. So that is really the intent of the exchange. The purpose is to get, the purpose of talking with the board tonight is to get feedback if we should continue to develop this plan and come back in the next board meeting, August 12th, for a formal approval. It would allow us time to develop the formal legal documents to be able to proceed and head up the road along this land slot. Any questions? I think it's a very good plan. I think the city is very generous to give us that piece of land that we need. I think it's a very good deal for us.
With that information, I'd like to make motion approve a letter of intent for an exchange of property between the City of Milton and the District of Milton.
Oh, second.
Motion Tom seconded by Mike. To approve the letter of intent, as he just outlined, there are any other questions for the board? Like you said, we would be looking to formally approve this at our next meeting, so this is just telling them to keep the balls moving, keep the discussion and draft the necessary legal documents to support.
This same discussion will happen at the city level tomorrow as part of the town council agenda and the impending there. Your willingness to move forward will then go ahead with the legal documents to fully execute this transaction.
Sure.
There's a little piece by the library that they've been bugging about for two, three years, I think.
Yeah, it addresses our immediate need and instantly cleans up those other couple gray areas, I guess. The red not seen to me, I'm sorry. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion as stated, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And clearly passed. Thank you. And Ms. Gosdak is making his way to the podium for explanation. We will have discussion and possible action on our eighteen, I'm sorry, on our nineteen, 2019, 2020 dairy and bakery bids.
Dairy every year. So our dairy bids and bakery, dairy bids were submitted for us on behalf of the Wisconsin Food Nutrition team, nutrition purchasing for Washington. So for the dairy bids, we received two bags, one was from Alpha Bakery Company and the other one was from Canco. As you can see in your packet tonight, the Alpha Bakery Company numbers came in much lower than Canco. Those numbers came about, I took last year's total numbers that we used as far as the units that we used, and I used them in pricing and giving to these, so that's how those numbers came about. Same thing with the dairy. We received three dairy bids, one was from Currie Farms, the other one was from Maples and Dairy Camps, which is our current dairy, and the other one was from CO Dairy. And the other one was from ECO Merry Gold of Elkhorn. So looking at those numbers there, ECO Merry Gold came in cheaper out of the three of those. So my recommendation for tonight is that we accept the closed pricing offered by Elba Bakery and ECO Merry Gold for this coming up school year, 1920. So recommendation motion to approve the 1920 bread and dairy bids as presented.
Any questions for anybody? And we will need a motion to approve both, please.
Next one, move.
Second.
Motion to Mike. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Dairy and bakery bids. Thank you, Mr. Gosdak. Uh, Mr. Ryan's making his way up. Discussion and possible action on student academic standards for the nineteen, 2019, 2020 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Tonight, I would present one to the board on behalf of Brian Douglas, who's actually out of town this weekend. He's having a wedding. His flying back as we speak. So this is a annual notice to the board pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120 dot 1212. Those require us to work with the board to provide a public notice to all stakeholders about our academic standards of the school district. Obviously, a couple of highlights to share with the board during the 19th and 19th school year. Our advocacy developed a curriculum innovation and design cycle that really helps guide our efforts as we continue to improve our curriculum and make sure it's aligned to the standards. In your packet, that memo that Brian had prepared, has a couple of really great links to academic, Wisconsin academic model standards as well as the Common Core standards. If you're so inclined, take a look at those documents. They provide a little better overview of this, like greater entail for you as a board. As part of that design cycle, innovation cycle for curriculum is developed in four different phases. We have learning investigation years, innovation and design years, as well as implementation year. And we finish with the continuous improvement cycle of years five and six. Science is really an area of focus for our district. Last year, we had a K 12 team of educators and administrators that got together and really dug in the next generation science standards. And part of that team's work made recommendations for curriculum for purchase of new science materials for the following school year. They actually just arrived last week at Northside. MS Chief was processing them in the large group area. We're super excited to get into those come of our K 5 students next school year. In respect to curriculum design cycle, our social studies departments, library, media specialists, student services and specials areas, our art using in five ed, they will be up in that investigation and learning phase as part of that curriculum design cycle. The last kind of thing for the board is a FYI, DPI adopted new standards for social studies. So part of those new standards, they break them down into grade level bands, which is a little bit different than in the past. So we have a K 2 band, a 3-5 band, a 6 or 8 grade band, as well as a high school specific band of standards for students in the area of social studies. So that includes, you know, traditional history, geography, behavioral sciences, economics, political science. And the one new thing that I want to highlight for the board tonight was inquiry practices and processes. So the social studies team will be taking into that over the next year, looking at how we do business. And those inquiry practices and processes are really broken down into five different areas. So we want students to be able to construct meaningful questions that initiate an inquiry, gather and evaluate sources, develop plans using evidence and supportive reasoning, communicate critique conclusions and be significantly engaged. So the new social studies standards are a little bit bigger picture about teaching students to be inquiry. And if you like having that mindset, just approaching problems. And that's probably the biggest update of what it's going to be doing for next year with our standards. For the document that Ryan had prepared for the board, it's our intention if you guys approve that, that will be posted to our database for families to know what our standards are for students at our school.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions for the board? This is also an action item for us to approve these standards and include them in our relevant applications.
I think most of we accept the student academic standards as presented for 1920.
I'll second that, but I also have a question before we go forward and ask that. Are we looking at these, here comes my equity lens. Are we looking at these through the equity lens or that social emotional learning piece? Is that part of that or does that come kind of later on?
Absolutely, that would be part of it. So when I talked about that innovation and design cycle for our curriculum, I believe that would be the work that is taking place with teacher teams in that learning and investigation year. So really dig into the standards and I think that would be one of the questions that guides our work together. We think about the social emotional competencies. I think that would be a big part of the student services team. It's actually up there in being a year one of our, of our plan next year. So they'd be looking at those competencies and social emotional learning for our students.
Okay.
Thank you for the question here.
Okay, motion from Tom, seconded by Karen, uh, to approve the two academic standards for the 2019, 2020 school year. Uh, without any other questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. That clearly passed. And we're going to roll on to open enrollment alternative applications. Kimmer?
We'll see more of these now as we have passed July 1st. Parents now have an opportunity to apply for open enrollment for 1920 if they missed the application period earlier this spring or if they have recently moved or, I guess, some kids coming in from broken schools, especially in the public schools. There are six in and seven out as opposed to that year's summer issue.
I make a motion that we accept the 1920 open enrollment alternative application as presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Karen, seconded by Tom, to accept the open enrollment alternative applications. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? And motion also clearly passes. Rolling on to miscellaneous staffing report.
I would make a motion that we accept the staffing report for July 15th as it was presented to us in our packets.
I'll second it.
Motion from Karen, seconded by Mike, to accept the staffing report as you see it in writing. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Opposed.
That motion clearly passes. Action on gifts and donations.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $20,750 gratitude.
Second.
Motion from Mike and seconded by Karen, and I would also echo the gratitude. The $20,000 donation there from the Harmony PTO for playground equipment. Um, they're eternally grateful to the support of all of the wonderful people in our community. Um, so for accepting those donations, all in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And also clearly passes. And we are up to meeting dates. It's on our horizon.
I don't know of any HR committee meeting that needs to happen that, that may, uh, need to be scheduled between now and the next board meeting, which is August 12th.
Okay.
So we're back to the two per month schedule now. So August 12th and 27th, maybe the next.
August 27th, okay.
We could have a representative advisory subcommittee presentation by providers on the 29th.
The 29th?
Yes.
I also knew, also know that we need to get a transportation meeting scheduled, but I also would note that one of our committee members is not here. Do we know when Rick is done, when he's back?
Oh, I think it's just a week.
I think he'll be back by this time next week.
Jen, can we wait that long or do we need to? Okay, so we'll maybe hold off then until he's back next year afterwards. Um, and then I'm just wondering if we want to set, and I don't know if we want the board to do this or how. Um, I guess I would like the student board to do it as a whole, but set a policy committee meeting to take a look at some of those policies that were suggested way back when at the conclusion of our investigation to get the ball rolling and getting those changed, if that's what we're going to be doing.
I was just going to suggest that to you.
And I do know, just as a side note, from my discussions this weekend during the leadership conference, that it was highly recommended that, that just, that happened throughout the entire, with the entire board, not just with the policy committee.
Yeah, I think so too. I wish we could get us back involved in this policy direction.
It's not, I mean, because we're not, it would just suck very specific policies that we're taking.
We had a group that meant to talk through where we are with those, with the policies and try that. The, the talk through where we are with policies and I think bringing that information to the board is, is what we would want for us. I think that's a good next step. Okay, that exhausts our agenda.
Um, I'm sorry. I know the last time, I think we were talking about, uh, at the last, I think the last meeting, about the fair, uh, financial audit and we were gonna.
Baker Tilly.
Yeah.
Baker Tilly. They're not Tilly, but they're Baker.
Fair. It's been a long day. Baker Tilly and we're going to meet as like a, a board of old to kind of walk through that. I don't, I don't know when a good day to do that is or date. I just didn't want to, you know, drop off three. So I guess just kind of plant the seed.
Yeah, it's still on our to-do list. The, the gal from Baker Tilly wasn't available for tonight. And obviously our couple of board members not able to become here or not either. So we're still, that's still top of the list. We're going to get those folks back in. But tell us where they're at and we have to decide if we're doing more, well, preparing that type of thing, so.
Is it possible to do that at a board meeting?
I think so. Um, I guess I would hope it is. Get, get that on the agenda for the next board meeting and get into that.
Let's see if I could suggest them and then we get that on to make sure we get them.
I'm assuming you probably will. Yep. Okay, then we are going to have a chance to go to executive session here for a moment. So for a motion to go into executive session, statute 1985 parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of a public employee for which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And specifically, we're going to get administrative assistant compensation update there. We will be adjourning from executive session. We don't anticipate coming back to take any action. So it's been FYI for you folks, so, uh, we will have, I need a motion for that, so.
Second.
Motion from Tom, seconded by Karen. Roll call, Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Joe is yes. Brian?
Yes.
Tom? Five, hold. We are in executive session. Thank you.